Good afternoon. Good afternoon Prime Minister and Chair of the Conference. My microphone please. Good afternoon everyone and welcome to the press conference. We apologise for the delayed start. My name is Laverne Reed from the CARICOM Secretariat in Guyana and I am very pleased to present to you today the Chair of the Conference of CARICOM Heads of Government, Dr the Most Honourable Andrew Holness. This afternoon he is joined at this press conference, the closing press conference for the 49th meeting of the conference, by colleague heads of government and Dr Carla Barnett, Secretary General of CARICOM. I now invite the Chair of Conference to address you.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to welcome you to this afternoon's press conference as we bring to an end the 49th regular CARICOM meeting. I am happy to be joined by my colleague head, Prime Minister of St Kitts and Nevis, the incoming chair, Honourable Dr Terence Drew and Mr Laurent Saint-Sir of Haiti, the Haiti's Transitional Presidential Council. And of course, Dr Carla Barnett, our Secretary General. The theme of the CARICOM conference was people, partnership and prosperity, promoting a secure and sustainable future. Over the past two days, we addressed several critical issues of urgent regional priority and reaffirmed our commitment to deliver tangible results for the people of the community. Before I provide an update on the discussions, allow me to take a moment to honour the memory of Ricky Singh, the esteemed Guyana-born journalist whose fearless incisive reporting shaped Caribbean discourse for over six decades. Mr Singh passed away recently in Barbados, leaving behind a legacy of courage, integrity and unwavering commitment to regional unity and press freedom. We extend our deepest condolences to his family, friends and colleagues in Caribbean journalism. On the CARICOM single market and economy, we agreed that the we agreed that the pace and scope of implementation was just too slow and we agree that we will do everything in our power to speed up implementation. And I'm pleased to share that we are now moving from applying administratively the Protocol on Enhanced Cooperation, which all member states have signed, with now four countries, Barbados, Belize, St Vincent and the Grenadines and Dominica, reiterating their willingness to implement full free movement under the protocol starting October 1, 2025. I want to make clear that Jamaica remains committed to implementing full free movement in accordance with the treaty amendments and we are also examining ways to speed up our own implementation. The fact is that due to our legislative framework and other considerations, we have had to move with greater consideration. However, it is our intention to speed up the implementation of full free movement. Jamaica is indeed committed to this. Now, within the framework of existing, the existing skills regime, heads agreed to add aviation personnel to the approved list of skilled categories. And it is worth noting that Jamaica contributed three new occupations to the list, namely photogrammetry, field maintenance personnel and aircraft maintenance personnel. The External Trade Negotiations Committee, which I lead, continues to monitor the developments in the trade space as we seek to develop a collective strategic response to issues which affect us. We also discussed deepening and diversifying CARICOM's bilateral trade relations with several traditional and non-traditional partners. Now, as I shared during my opening remarks on Sunday, a secure CARICOM is a viable CARICOM and as such, security remains high on the agenda for the duration of my chairmanship and beyond. We adopted the Montego Bay Declaration on Transnational Organized Crime and Gangs, underscoring our united stance against criminal networks. We welcomed, as one of our special guests, His Excellency Valdesi Urquiza, Secretary General of Interpol and committed to strengthening cooperation and expanding access to its global resources. We also welcomed the Secretary General of the OAS, His Excellency Albert Ramdin, and explored avenues for renewed cooperation with the OAS. On Haiti, we continue to be gravely concerned about the developments in that country. CARICOM has been very vocal in its call for international support and has been working with Haiti to ensure that its needs and concerns are being addressed. We had a very detailed discussion with Mr. Saint-Sir of the Haitian Transitional Presidential Council, who apprised us of the work of that council towards strengthening security, holding a referendum on the reform of the constitution and holding elections in November. Later on, I will invite Mr. Saint-Sir to share a few of his own perspectives on the situation. In November 2025, all roads will lead to Bellem, Brazil, for the UN Climate Change Conference, that is COP30. As small states, we continue to have a vested interest in building climate resilience. We approved our regional climate priorities and revised framework for building climate resilience 2025-2030, ensuring that the Caribbean speaks with one voice on climate financing and adaptation. On food and nutrition security, this continues to be a key element of our agenda as we seek to reduce the region's food import bill through the transformation of our agricultural sector. As we agreed in February to extend the Vision 25 by 2025 initiative until 2030, we used this meeting to endorse the Food Security Formulation and Design Plan and related mechanisms. I wish to thank President Ali of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana, who has been expertly leading the region's effort under this portfolio. As you may have heard, a recent report highlighted Guyana as probably the only country in the world which has the capacity to feed itself. Guyana is indeed food-sufficient. Earlier this year, heads of government initiated a discussion on enhancing governance arrangements in CARICOM to improve implementation of decisions and to provide political leadership. The reality is that our operations must be more agile and fit for purpose as we seek to deliver outcomes for our community in more efficient and timely ways. We also received updates on several frameworks and mechanisms for functional cooperation, which are at various stages of implementation or consideration. And these include the draft CARICOM Industrial Policy and Strategy, which is being conceptualized to promote government interventions and policies to empower specific industries, sectors and firms to achieve and sustain regional competitiveness. Demographic trends and the proposed establishment of a Regional Population Commission, through which we can inform the preparation of a CARICOM population policy. That's another framework which we discussed. We also discussed a report from our CARICOM Youth Ambassadors regarding the most pressing needs of regional youth. We welcome their vision and their role in regional development and look forward to an improved institutional framework for their involvement. The proposed CARICOM Education Transformation Commission was also discussed, and this is devised to drive a unified equity-based education reform agenda across the region. In particular, we discussed how it can be operationalized in a manner that ensures its sustainability and does not compound the requirements of member states. Of course, we also discussed arrangements for the staging of the 15th Carrefester in Barbados next month. Prime Minister Motley spoke on these arrangements and she has asked me to extend invitation to everyone who attended the conference and of course, to all Jamaicans to support Barbados in their hosting of Carrefester. Now, while the European Union has recommended to the European Parliament via its delegated Regulation of June 2025 that Jamaica and Barbados be delisted, this has not fully materialized as different groups in the parliament, for reasons unrelated to the domestic situation in Barbados and Jamaica, have issued motions that will block positive action in this regard. We urge a reconsideration of this posture. Now, we also had exchanges on legislation for online safety and protection of young people from online abuse, cyberbullying and exploitation. In recognition of the importance of this issue, we have mandated the Legal Affairs Committee to look at a proposal for a model law for the digital safety of Caribbean people following the consultations and discussions that were held. On the issue of regional transportation, we also agreed to establish a small committee led by the Prime Ministers of St Vincent and the Grenadines and the Republic of Barbados, as well as the President of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana, to review presentations on ferries and report back to heads. We also discussed the issue of reparations and I'm pleased to report that there was broad support for Jamaica moving forward with a petition to King Charles III, in his capacity as Jamaica's Head of State, to seek a formal ruling from the Privy Council on whether the Atlantic enslavement of Africans was lawful under common law and whether local laws supporting it were invalid and whether or not slavery, as practiced in Jamaica up to 1838, constituted a crime against humanity under international law and whether, if so, the United Kingdom bears a legal obligation to provide reparations to Jamaica and its people for the enduring harm caused. Through the use of this legal route to challenge the historical legality of slavery and assert claims for reparations, this petition will mark a watershed moment for CARICOM and the broader global movement for reparatory justice. Ladies and gentlemen, the next six months of Jamaica's chairmanship will be very active with several opportunities for us to amplify on the world stage the issues we have discussed and agreed upon in Montego Bay. Indeed, we look forward to engaging our partners at the Second CARICOM Africa Summit to be held in Ethiopia this September and at the 88th session of the United Nations General Assembly, also being held in September, and at COP30 to be held in Brazil in November and the Summit of the Americas to be held in the Dominican Republic in December. To my colleague heads of government, delegations from the member states and associate members of CARICOM, the CARICOM Secretariat and the community organizations, our special guests and our many international partners and friends, I express my sincere appreciation for your contributions to the success of this meeting. I am inspired by what we have accomplished and confident of what we will continue to achieve together. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now take your questions and respond to your queries.
Thank you, Chair. We will abide by the protocols already established by the Office of the Prime Minister in Jamaica. One question per journalist, please. And when you are recognized, please give us your name, the media entity you represent and the territory from which you come. Prime Minister, we also have journalists online and we will take a few questions there as well.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Moderator. But before we take your questions, and I know there would be many questions, I did say that I would ask my good friend, Laurent Saint-Sir of the Transitional Presidential Council in Haiti to give us a few words.
Thank you. At the conclusion of my participation in the 49th Conference of Head of State of CARICOM, I'd wish to express my deep gratitude to the government of Jamaica for its warm welcome and to the Honourable Andrew Holness for his leadership. I commend his commitment alongside all our CARICOM partners to placing the security crisis in Haiti at the forefront of regional priorities. Haiti today needs the region to speak with one voice in defense of security, peace and sustainable development. I thank the countries that have already contributed personally to the MSS and those offering training in support of our national security force. But we must readable our efforts. Each sister nation can continue to contribute to the restoration of peace and security in Haiti through training, logistical support, financial assistance and technical support. We are also counting on you to intensify advocacy with other regional and global partners for increased support toward more rigorous regional cooperation in controlling the illicit flow of arms and ammunition and combating drug trafficking. I welcome the discussions and the shared consensus that Haiti's security also depends on investments, including foreign direct investment to address the structural causes of insecurity. Haiti remain a land of opportunity. We invite our partners to support economic recovery, especially in key sectors such as infrastructure, the green economy, innovation, education and training, cultural tourism and security, particularly in the Greater North and Greater South. I reaffirm my commitment to working alongside my colleagues at the TPC toward a successful transition. Haiti is ready to fully assume its responsibilities, but we will not succeed alone. Haiti relies on its friends and international partners, especially within CARICOM, for the restoration of security, the organization of elections and long-term support for national reconstruction. It is together, through a united front of coherent, sustainable and solidaristic actions that we will be able to face this crisis and deliver on the major priorities of Haiti's transition. Helping Haiti rise is to respond to a regional imperative of security, stability and solidarity. This is what it means to build a safe and sustainable future, the team that has brought us together over these past three days. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurent. We can now take questions.
Thank you, Chair. If you would raise your hand, please. We will recognize you in the order in which I see you and then afterwards, we'll ask you to turn your microphone on. Floor is open? Yes, please go ahead. Lady in the black jacket, yes.
Thank you. Just, Patricia Duncan, The Guardian, UK, and I'm from St Vincent and the Grenadines. And this is directed to the Prime Minister Holness. Just in terms of the reparations discussions that you had and you mentioned that you had broad support for Jamaica's move to take those questions to King Charles. I wanted to find out what implications this will have for other Caribbean countries, especially those, you know, where King Charles is not their Head of State. How will this affect or support the reparations movement moving forward? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. The reparations movement has grown and there are diverse approaches as to how the issue of reparations should be treated. The consensus in CARICOM is that we should explore all routes, but we should be coordinated. Jamaica had long had its own reparations effort and I think at this point, I should acknowledge the efforts of Jamaican Member of Parliament Mike Henry, who many years ago brought a resolution to the Jamaican Parliament to pursue a particular avenue, which is an appeal to the Head of State, now the King, through the Privy Council to test whether or not slavery was actually legal under British law and slavery as practiced by the British Empire, whether or not that was legal. That resolution was passed in our Parliament and affirmed by our Cabinet and we are now executing it. The CARICOM Reparations Council Committee also has an approach, which is a much broader approach, which seeks to look at the developmental aspects of the reparation movement and approach. And we had discussions internally as to how both strategies can be reconciled and it was agreed that both strategies reinforce each other. And it was agreed, therefore, that Jamaica could move forward. Now, exploring it, we don't know what the outcome will be, but whatever the outcome is, advances the cause of reparation. If the answer is yes, it was illegal, then clearly everybody benefits. If the answer is no, then we understand what the position of the former colonial power is and we know how to strategize around that. So it's a win-win for everyone. So it's a win-win for everyone.
Gentlemen, just beside her, please go ahead.
Hello, good evening. Akash Samaru, Guardian Media in Trinidad and Tobago. Now, with respect to the United States and the imposition of tariffs, now the initial deadline for nations to finalize bilateral trade agreements, which was July ninth, has been extended to August first. When President Trump first announced tariffs in April, most CARICOM countries were at ten percent. Now, from CARICOM's perspective, was that issue discussed, and what's the plan here on the issue as it evolves?
As you would know, CARICOM has an external trade negotiation committee. First of all, that committee has been very active, and they have met. Ambassador McCook leads the direct administrative interface. But they have also mobilized various working groups, which include the CARICOM Private Sector Organization, which we received a very extensive report this morning at the private sector engagement. And we have also solicited support from other entities. Now, our position is that we should seek to defend the historical trade relations that we have had with the United States, particularly under the CBI. We cannot give up on differential and preferential treatment for small island developing states. The truth is that trade also has a development element to it. Now, this is not wishful thinking, but we do recognize that we are existing in a changing environment. But we must negotiate strongly from our position, and that is, there is the development aspect, and we should continue to press home that trade should take into consideration the historical development issues of the region. Nevertheless, we have engaged with the US Trade Representative on this matter, and they have essentially said that after the ninth, then they will reengage with us for further negotiations. So we are preparing for very strong negotiations for our position.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recognizing the gentleman on this side, please go ahead.
Good evening. This question is to Dr. Holness. And there was supposed to be discussions yesterday on climate change and financing. Is there any update, Prime Minister?
I'm sorry. We are preparing, as usual, for the upcoming COP, which will include discussions on climate financing. I mean, the issues haven't really changed, the issue of access and the dedication of more resources to climate change. We did discuss, and the concerns were raised, that it is clear that some countries are recrafting, recalibrating, even changing their position on the issue of climate change and the financing that they would have normally allocated, and it is a concern. But we should bear in mind that this region, and in particular CARICOM and small island developing states, will continue to lobby very hard for climate justice. And we will continue to press the international community to fulfill their obligations as it relates to ensuring that there is adequate resources for adaptation and mitigation efforts.
Thank you, Chairman. Please go ahead.
Anthony Logg, Television, Jamaica. Dr. Holness, the International Court of Justice is due to deliver its advisory opinion on the legal consequences of climate change later this month. Can you say what are your expectations and what would be the next steps for the Caribbean if the advisory does not support the climate change, climate justice case?
Well, you know, it's hard to make a pronouncement on what a court is likely to say. But without prejudice to that, I would be surprised if the pronouncement were not that there is an impact on, in particular, lesser developed countries from climate change, and in particular, small island developing states, and that there should be special provisions in financing made to ensure that there is climate justice in this regard. That would be my expectation, not my pronouncement, on what the court may say. May I take this opportunity to invite the incoming Chair, Dr. Terence Drew, Prime Minister of St Kitts, if you would like to comment on this matter?
Thank you very much, Chairman. With respect to the issue of climate change, the Caribbean has been on the forefront of really advocacy and pushing for justice. We have not relented in our efforts to ensure that we see some level of justice. And just to give you some background as to why we are continuing to fight for this matter as a matter of justice and not a matter of sympathy or any other discussion around it. We suffer significantly as a result of climate change. This is the hurricane season, and right now it is like Russian roulette. We don't know who will be hit. And who will be hit can be hit devastatingly, which would take years of recovery, or the extent of the damage can be such a high percentage of the overall GDP that those countries are set back. We see the effects with respect to the Sargassum affecting the beaches throughout the Caribbean and having an impact on our tourism. We see the insidious impact of climate change with respect to the increased temperature and so forth, and how that is affecting our infrastructure, our daily lives, and even health. Climate and health is a significant matter, and I speak as a medical doctor as well, climate and agriculture and food security. Climate is affecting every single aspect of our life, whether we know it or not. And therefore, we are expecting that, you know, and is reasonable to expect that the court will stand on the side of justice. So we are hoping for a favorable outcome. If for any reason the outcome that we hope to get is not had, that will not daunt us in any way. We will continue to be on the front line of this advocacy and to seek justice, and ask the Caribbean press, you all are here, you live in the Caribbean, you suffer from the scourge of climate change, we want you also to join us to make a strong case for the Caribbean, SIDS, and other countries that are disproportionately affected by climate change. To say lastly, we have not created the issue, we are the victims of the issue. However, we are not going to act like victims, we are going to be our own advocates, and to join with those who want to see justice with this. So we seek international partners, but we also seek your partnership. I want to see articles and news items dealing with the scourge of climate change in the Caribbean and spreading it to the wider world. So together, I think we can really make a strong case and reach where we intend to reach on the matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Prime Minister Drew.
Lady at the end of the table?
My question is to the Chairman. I'd like to find out from you if any other Caribbean country has committed to sending military aid to Haiti, and whether or not Jamaica will be sending more of its people to help in that country.
There are some longstanding commitments. I wouldn't necessarily call it military aid. More personnel support for the multinational security force that is there. But there are no new commitments since then to Jamaica and Belize, I believe, would be the only two countries that would have presently a deployment on the ground. I'm not sure the Bahamas has any deployment. They made a commitment, but I'm not sure that the Bahamas had a deployment. But they do help with maritime security in the area. Other countries regionally in Latin America have been providing support and have indicated my understanding that they are willing to provide support. Guyana and, well, Guyana would have indicated their willingness to provide humanitarian support, and of course Jamaica would join in that as well. The difficulty with providing humanitarian support is that you need to have some form of security mechanism to ensure that the humanitarian support actually gets to the intended beneficiaries. So presently, the challenge would be a resource challenge, to have enough resources to support a full deployment of security personnel. Currently, the largest deployment in Haiti would be from Kenya, and that essentially leads the multinational security force. But Lauren is here, and he could give you some more details on that.
Yes, I would add, based on my conversation with the Prime Minister of the Bahamas, he will try to send a vessel along with the help of the US in the region close to Haiti. So this is what I wanted to add.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please go ahead.
Thanks, okay. Gabriel Martinez from Chinghua News Agency. How viable and impactful do you define South-South cooperation for development of CARICOM? What concrete steps is the community taking after this meeting to deepen ties with other regions like Africa, Asia, Latin America? Thank you.
Well, to follow on from the question about what are we going to do about the new America First Trade Policy, which is being implemented, and the ten percent base tariff that we now face. We've long, as a region, we've long been talking about strengthening trade cooperation, South-South with Africa, with Central and South America, and even within CARICOM. Because even within CARICOM, the trade is probably less than fifteen percent internal relative to total trade. So the question is, you know, what are you going to do with this new base tariff that's implemented? Well, one of the things we have to do is to diversify our trade. And now it's not just a matter of talk, it is an urgent matter. So we have been engaged with the Afriexem Bank, and that has gone very well. They have established an office in Barbados, and Jamaica just today signed the instruments of partnership. And so we will be looking to utilize the trade facilitation and finance facilitation that comes with this partnership to increase trade, not just in goods, but trades in services as well, and in particular, the creative industries, which we do have a comparative and competitive advantage in. Internally, internally within CARICOM, there are still some non-tariff barriers and other measures that form an obstacle to trade. And we have put together a committee headed by the Foreign Ministers and Ministers of Trade of Jamaica and Barbados to seriously examine how we can reduce, if not totally remove, these non-tariff barriers, and to standardize procedures across the board to facilitate greater trade intra-regionally. The region has incredible resources, but there needs to be greater economic coordination through the CSME, but directly through our private sector. Guyana, for example, Guyana, Trinidad, and Suriname have incredible resources in energy. They have discovered oil. Jamaica has a very strong financial architecture, strong financial markets. Other areas are strong in agriculture and services. So there is a strong intra-regional basis for trade. There has to be some public infrastructure to support that as well. For example, the critical one is transportation. We have made some progress in air transportation, and from my remarks earlier, I mentioned that we have now, we're well down the road in developing a plan for a ferry service regionally, which is likely to start in the eastern Caribbean. But that would also have some cargo capabilities, and the plan is to expand that regionally. So I would say that for the first time, the region is really taking very seriously the diversification of the CSME and the common economy, and putting in place the infrastructure to support intra-regional trade and to support South-South trade.
Mr. Chairman, I know Jamaica has another event planned. We will take one more question from the room, and then we will wrap up for this afternoon.
My Prime Minister, Dr. Andrew Holness, as you know, my name is Russ Asta Black, and I'm from Bob Arts Television, which is local here in Jamaica. I would like to take things in a softer vibe right now in asking you to endorse the North Coast Highway from Montego Bay Airport to O'Toole, to be renamed the Reggae Highway as a tribute to all our ambassadors of this great music come from this little island,
How can I say no?
That's true.
But obviously, I can't make policy on the fly, but I would say, I would say it's an excellent, it's an excellent idea. And though this is not, what you have raised is not necessarily CARICOM-related, but just for context, we are planning the extension of the North-South Highway, and there actually was a proposal, still a live proposal, to name a part of that corridor of a great international musical icon with Jamaican heritage, Haribella Fonte. So the idea is one that does resonate with me, and I will take it back to Cabinet and have a full discussion to see how that could be accommodated. Thank you for the suggestion.
Thank you, Chairman. We appreciate that you, colleague heads, and the Secretary General have made yourselves available to speak today with the media. And the Chair would like to take a final question from the room, from the side.
Not that I would like to, but... Not that I would like to, but...
Good evening, everyone. I'm Shauna Fongiu. My question, are we going to see more trading among Caribbean nations?
Yeah, I mean, the... The answer to that is yes, you're going to see more trading. But look, most of our economies are service-based. So you're going to see more trade, but you should also take note that trade works when there are other parallel activities. So there needs to be a freer and more integrated capital market and a freer labor market. And therefore, the free movement of labor in the region is something that is critical. And as I had announced earlier, we now have four countries that have indicated that they are at the stage where they are prepared to start as at the 1st of October, that's the 1st of October. And Jamaica is making the commitment that we will do it, but we still have to work out our internal legal and procedural issues. But what we're committing to is to put that on a fast track. In fact, the Minister of Foreign Affairs will likely be tasked with ensuring that very, very soon, we can join the other four who have said they are ready. And the Secretary General is reminding me that for trade, you need transportation as well, and we are well on our way in that, both for trade and for the free movement of labor. Prime Minister Drew wanted to come in and then to take the final question.
Oh, right. I thought that was the final question, but nothing is wrong nonetheless. But with respect to a couple of things on the matter of Haiti, the other countries, I think all countries are on board to help out humanitarian, from the humanitarian standpoint. As you know, we don't have large armies, and those of us who have a sort of armies, really a defense force with limited resources. And so that might not be where the Caribbean is strongest. But the Caribbean, of course, what it's doing now through CARICOM, and of course humanitarian-wise, we are always ready to support, and Haiti knows that it has our support. With respect to the trade, I think that it is critically important, especially with the South-South that you spoke about and reconnecting to Africa. Mine myself has been, I have been to Africa twice this year already, to Nigeria. And as you know, the President for Nigeria visited the eastern Caribbean, specifically St. Lucia, just a few weeks ago. I had Air Peace landed in St. Kitts, which was one of the largest planes ever landed in St. Kitts and Nevis, that came directly from Abuja to St. Kitts and Nevis. And so we are very, very serious when we say we want to increase trade South-South, and especially between the Caribbean and Africa. And as the Chairman mentioned, we'll be going to Addis Ababa in Ethiopia just now in September. And through that mechanism, we hope to strengthen ties and to increase South-South trade. The world is shifting, things are shifting, and we must shift. We can't complain. Other countries make decisions in their interests. We must make decisions in our interests and not be totally upset with other countries. So our matter is, how can we do for ourselves so that the Caribbean and CARICOM can continue to thrive? And to say lastly, I mean, the Prime Minister Andrew Holness would wrap up, is that, seeing I will be the Chair, the incoming Chair, and my chairmanship will last from the 1st of January for six months in 2026, and we intend to have our conference there, our Heads of Government, the 25th of February to the 27th of February. And so I want to invite you, of course, to that as well, and to let you know that the present Chair, Prime Minister Holness, can count on my support as the incoming Chair, because his success as Chair of CARICOM is all of our success, and we continue to build a stronger and stronger Caribbean community. Thank you very much for your indulgence.
Good evening, Most Honorable Dr. Holness. My name is Michael Brown, and I serve as the Deputy Head of Mission of the Black Diplomats Academy based in Canada. You mentioned that the youth ambassadors came up with a CARICOM Education Transformation Commission. Can you please expound on what that infrastructure would look like, and what's the timeline for such a rollout would be, and what partnerships would be most relevant to help with the implementation?
Thank you. Thank you for that question. Two separate things. The Education Transformation, the Education Transformation Task Force Commission, it's, I don't believe that was by the youth ambassadors, but they would have given their views relative to education. I'm going to allow the Secretary General to give you some more details on that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The CARICOM Educational Transformation Commission is a separate effort, and it is designed to do review and recommendations on how education can be transformed, delivered, received differently for young people and constant learning throughout life, to develop the capabilities within our society that we need to treat with the issues that we're dealing with and to overcome some of those that we would have adopted from the education systems, which for the most part were developed during the colonial era. So that is one issue. The other issue of the young people is separately situated. The community and Chairman Holness has made an absolute priority of it. We value the input of young people, we are encouraging it, our CARICOM ambassadors program, the Young Ambassadors Program is critical. But we want to develop their involvement in policymaking, in influencing what we do by involving them more systematically in the process, rather than limit their participation only to a single exchange with heads on the occasion of this kind of meeting. So there's a proposal to develop a more ongoing conversation with young people that they have come up with, and we're in the process of working out how we implement expanding youth involvement in decision-making in the community.
Thank you.
Chairman, oh, I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
In summary, you know, I often ask when I return from CARICOM trips abroad, and I'm certain that when I go back to Kingston, somebody's going to ask, so how did this benefit Jamaica? Which I'm sure when Prime Minister Drew returns to St. Kitts, he's going to be asked, so were you in Montego Bay having Akian softish meal and on the beach, or were you, were you working in our interest? And sometimes it's very difficult for the public to relate with this exercise of bringing regional heads together, because it all looks so officious and so way above everybody's grasp and understanding of the issues, because the issues can oftentimes seem so remote. And so it doesn't seem as if it deals with the bread and butter issues. But take, for example, the bread and butter issue of being able to conduct banking transactions with ease and convenience. For the average person, the overbearing regulations are a great frustration, and they could easily conclude it is just the inefficiency of government, why we have to fill out so many documents and provide so many forms of identification and answer so many questions to transfer $100. Not understanding that there is a global architecture for anti-money laundering and other requirements imposed on states by various global entities. And it affects not just Jamaica, it affects an entire region. This is a problem that is right across the region. And therefore, governments have to come together regionally to interface with these global bodies and lobby on your behalf, so that the regulation requirements can be much more efficient and simpler for the average person to be able to interface with the financial system. I would have read something, and I'll read it again to demonstrate the problem. While the European Commission has recommended to the European Parliament via its delegated Regulation of June 2025 that Jamaica and Barbados be delisted, this has not fully materialized as different groups in the parliament, that is the European Parliament, for reasons unrelated to the domestic situation in Barbados and Jamaica, have issued motions that will block positive action in this regard. We urge a reconsideration of this posture. Nobody understands that. And therefore, the question would be asked of me, you know, why, why did you come here? Well, hidden in all of this is CARICOM's strident appeal to the European Union to exercise a greater discretion that countries that have complied through great sacrifice, discomfort, and cost to the people of a developing country, that greater discernment and consideration be given to our circumstances, and that we are not lumped in with everyone else, or having to wait for an extended period of time before relief can be given to us. And so that is what we were here doing today. It may not materialize tomorrow that you'll have an easier banking system, but over time it will. Take, for example, the issue of security. Crime and violence used to be thought of many, many years ago as only a Jamaica problem. Now, it is a regional problem, and all of us, all heads, have to be addressing it. Crime and violence is, I use the term, you know, multifaceted and multidimensional. Prime Minister Drew, by trading a medical doctor, takes very strongly and seriously the public health approach. For me, I was and still am an advocate of the public health approach. But having had to deal with the problem for the last almost 10 years, I have come to the conclusion, by virtue of the evidence that I see every day, that a large part of crime and violence is organized. It has intelligence, finance, and some structured administration behind it. I use the word administration advisedly. But there is somebody planning, somebody accounting, somebody keeping records, somebody checking what is happening, somebody making connections. And we have not dealt with it for the sophistication that is behind it. Now, the truth is that if you were to look at every homicide committed, every murder committed in the region, maybe 70% or more could be ascribed to an organized use of violence, which ended up in the ultimate loss of life. If that is the case, we have to restructure our society. We have to restructure our police force to deal with this. We have to retrain them. We have to train their doctrine. We have to give them the right equipment. We have to give them the intelligence capability. We have to look at our legislative framework. We have to look at the judicial prudence that is employed to deal with this, because that's the nature of the problem. We have to also consider it an emergency, because if it is left unattended, then you see the ultimate result of that, which is a state being threatened to be overtaken by gangs, which is Haiti. And that is what we are here discussing, which is why the, one of our special guests was the Secretary General of Interpol. Interpol is the premier global policing organization. They have incredible resources. They have massive databases, which can be of use to us in dealing with this organized criminal enterprise. And therefore, we are exploring ways to intensify. We do have a very strong relationship with Interpol, but we're looking at ways to intensify that. And more than that, we are also sharing with other countries in the region. We've put on a mini security expo to show other countries in the region what Jamaica is doing and how what we're doing could be replicated in their own space. And so that's beneficial to everyone. And there are multiple other activities here which will redown to the benefit of the average person, whether it is to increase your ease of travel, your financial access, reduction in the cost of living, increase in job opportunities, increase in healthcare, dealing with issues of climate change. All of these impact the average person. So in closing, these meetings are absolutely important for the local electorate, and I wish to assure that others listening regionally, that your issues in your country were ably addressed by your representatives who attended this meeting. And again, I thank all the heads who attended, all the delegations. It was a successful meeting, and even contentious matters, which at the start appeared intractable, at the end, you saw my selfie with everybody smiling. God bless you all, and thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening.